Hi, I'm Scott Mooney. I'm a full-time organizer with the LaRouche PAC. Welcome to today's symposium. For those who came in after the singing, just please take a moment to make sure that your cellphones are silenced because you're already important enough to have chosen to participate in today's symposium. And I don't think there's anything more pressing that needs to be tended to for the next few hours here. And besides, you're gonna need your imagination for what's about to unfold. We're gonna have to free your imagination from its cell and let it out on good behavior. Imagine for a moment that we're seated here today in a conference room of the White House. And you can imagine a large oak conference table, and around it are seated members of the cabinet, uniformed military officers, special advisors to the president. I don't think you'll have difficulty imagining the comfy leather executive chairs. We went the extra mile today. And consider the discussion that could be happening among the presidency. In a minute, you're gonna hear from Diane Sayer, a member of LaRouche's slate of six congressional candidates. She's gonna be discussing very urgent strategic considerations around the globe, the danger of World War III, the need to remove Obama. Imagine that she could be presenting to the discussion here the prospect of the end of our republic's mortal enemy, the British Empire. After Diane, you're gonna hear from Shawna Halevi, a member of LaRouche's basement team, on the creative mental life of Albert Einstein, a genius. And imagine that this could be the discussion that the presidency is having about policy for our republic and the world for the next 50, 100, 200 years. You heard the music just now. I hope you enjoyed it. You're gonna hear from Mr. LaRouche at 4:30. And this could be the discussion. This could be the ideas that are leading our nation and the world right now. And you might say, "Well, that's nice. I wouldn't mind if our national leaders understood Einstein or knew how to sing. Maybe the Star Spangled Banner at a minimum. I don't know about Haydn or Bach or Mozart." But what about things like jobs? Are these ideas that you're talking about really presidential concerns? Well, this is the presidency of Mr. LaRouche. This is his concept, where you might have different features and facets: art, science, economics, and politics. But they're all unified by one idea, which is human creativity. And that is the proper concern of the American presidency. It's a very unique concern among the history of nations. The proper concern of our presidency is the role of human creativity in the future, what the future's gonna be over 50, 100, 200 years. You know, an urgent concern for a presidency, according to LaRouche, are things that unfold according to a 62-million-year cycle. A hotspot, an urgent hotspot, the Middle East is important. But what about the Virgo Cluster? What about the intense cosmic radiation that we're experiencing as a solar system? This is the scale of thinking that our presidency has to have. Now, you say, "Okay, well, I can kinda see that. I can kinda see why that's important. But what about right now? You mentioned World War III. We gotta get Obama out. Let's be practical. Let's talk about these urgent concerns." And I say, "Well, okay. Consider the role that the Russian government is playing in avoiding the march towards World War III. The calm, cool headiness that you see coming from President Medvedev, Prime Minister Putin." They have their special envoy to NATO, obviously very trusted, Dmitri Vygotsyn, trusted enough to go deal with a very delicate matter: the missile defense systems in Europe, the danger of World War III breaking out. Dmitri Vygotsyn also is the man from Russia who's proposing to the United States to cooperate together around the Strategic Defense of Earth, SDE, a callback to Mr. LaRouche's policy of the 1970s, the SDI, where you'd have nations working together around the frontiers of science, around concerns, in this case, of a galactic nature, not just the ability to defend against missiles, but also taking into consideration the threats to our planet from a larger source in our solar system and galaxy. And from that standpoint, I don't think it's very difficult to imagine actually that this discussion that we're about to start here today is actually happening. Maybe not in the White House, which is under hostage, it's a hostage situation there right now, but in the real presidency of the United States. It doesn't take the imagination of an Albert Einstein, doesn't take a genius, as they might say, to realize that LaRouche's political focus is what's dominating the planet right now. It is what leading members of nations are concerning themselves with. So, a kingdom for our stage. Let our imagination work upon you. Diane?
So, at 5 o'clock this morning, a very disheveled-looking president, Barack Obama, appeared before the White House press corps. He was wearing a red Superman cape, a blue t-shirt, and flip-flops, and he had matching Superman boxer shorts. And he announced his resignation from the presidency, saying that he had to resign because the American people are unworthy of him and they no longer believe in his magical powers. Now, Albert Einstein said that imagination is more important than knowledge. And I know many of you here may object, "Well, you're not Albert Einstein, and what you just said is completely ridiculous." And I would say, "Well, that's true, because when Barack Obama resigns, I think Valerie Jarrett is gonna make him dress up in a suit and tie." But many of you here would say, "Well, that'll never happen. Really?" The interesting thing about pessimism is that people who are pessimistic actually are usually in denial about how bad things actually are. For example, probably many of you here who think that we can't remove Barack Obama from the White House before the next elections also probably think that it's an exaggeration to say that we're headed for a thermonuclear World War III. They would never let that happen. That would be crazy. Do people know what would happen if you had a nuclear war? That would never happen, never mind. And people have this view that somehow we can do a clean strike. "We'll just do one little nuclear bomb on Iran. It'll be over in 24 hours." No one will follow up. Never mind that hundreds of thousands of Russian civilians and scientists live in Syria and Iran, and never mind that the British said that since the Russians have violated something or other, which they made up, that if they are to launch strikes on Syria or Iran, they don't think they're gonna tell the Russians before it happens. And that the Russian Navy has now been moved, most of their very advanced naval fleet is in the Mediterranean at their port in Syria. So, why is it that people are so very certain that we could not have a nuclear war? I'm certain that if someone had told the people of Germany that there's no way, that someone had told the people of Germany that Adolf Hitler would be rounding people up and sending them to gas chambers where they were gonna be euthanized and burned up in incinerators, people would've said, "That is just a conspiracy theory. That's crazy. That'll never happen." Well, did it happen? In July of 2007, LaRouche made a famous forecast. He said that there was no way at this point that a collapse of the international banking system could be avoided. And later in the summer, he drafted something called the Homeowners and Bank Protection Act, which had as its basis a reenactment of Glass-Steagall and was a moratorium on foreclosures. And hundreds of city councils, dozens of state legislatures held hearings, passed resolutions in support of this. But stupid, popular opinion, as voiced by Barney Frank, prevented LaRouche's bill from being introduced in the Congress. Barney Frank went so far as to say that it was unconstitutional for the banks not to be allowed to throw people out of their homes. And as people know, what he said was, "It wasn't that bad." And he had another bailout plan, which, as you may know, 1.3 or 2 trillion, or however many trillion dollars later, the Barney Frank bailout of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac was, "We have now had over 9 million foreclosures in this country, and at least half of those are where people actually get thrown out of their houses." So, who was exaggerating? Thank God Rachel Brown took care of Barney Frank, and he's not running again. So, what about thermonuclear war? First of all, have you ever stopped to think about what a thermonuclear war would look like? And I know that the baby boomer generation has been behavior-modified to be against anything that has the word "nuclear" in it. You were subjected to all of those bomb drills, hiding under your chairs. And of course, I don't know exactly how hiding under a desk or chair would protect you during a nuclear war, but you weren't supposed to ask that question. But when I was young, I grew up in a New England Quaker household, and I used to, my father was a really extreme environmentalist, so the house was kept absolutely freezing. And in the morning, you were allowed to go downstairs and turn on the thermostat, and the hot air would come up. And so, I used to dry my hair on the floor, looking up. And on the bookshelf right above my head, my parents kept two books that were written by the survivors of the nuclear bombs dropped at Hiroshima and Nagasaki. And I will not detail here what happened to the people who were not fortunate enough to be killed instantaneously, but what that looks like and what people experienced is something that no human being and no animal should ever be forced to suffer. This is why Obama has to be removed. Iran and Syria are not a threat to the United States. They're also not a threat to Israel, because they're not stupid. They know what would happen if they were to attack Israel. And after the murder of Gaddafi, LaRouche said, "This unleashes World War III." This murder of Gaddafi, remember, he was already in captivity. He was already in custody. He had already been beaten, tortured, and then he was shot. That is a war crime. And it unleashed a new level. LaRouche knew at that moment that we were headed to World War III. And particularly as Americans, you should think what it means if the United States is going to behave in such a flagrantly unjust way. Don't we value the principles in our Constitution? The whole war with Libya was a war crime. It was never authorized by the U.S. Congress. So, now you have a situation where you're hearing in the media, it's a replay of what we heard about Iraq. Remember that? "They're gonna have a missile, and it can hit anywhere in the world in 45 minutes. They're gonna blow up the world." Well, now we're hearing this about Iran. And in Iran, what you have is a nuclear power plant that just started operating in September. The Russians were involved in completing it. You have many Russian scientists on the ground there. So, think about what it means. This targeting of Iran and Syria has absolutely nothing to do with Iran and Syria. It is a war, would be a war, between the U.S. and Russia, and the U.S. and Russia and China. On top of that, we are moving major anti-ballistic missile defense systems, including offensive weapons, into Eastern Europe. And they're pointing toward Russia. And we're claiming to the Russians that Russia's not the target. We're moving all of these missiles right up to your border because we're afraid of a threat from Iran or North Korea. Now, if the Russians began putting a whole bunch of anti-ballistic missile systems in Mexico on the border of Arizona and Texas, and they were aiming right into the United States, and then they said they were doing this because they were concerned about a threat from Nigeria, how many people would believe that? So, three weeks ago, the president of Russia, President Medvedev, made a very clear, very sharp, national television address with English subtitles to make sure that Americans could understand it, where he said that he welcomed the initial shift in the Obama administration, where it looked like we were not gonna be putting all these missiles on their border. But somehow, this had all been changed, that he really very much hoped that there could be a dialogue between NATO, the U.S. on one side, and Russia on the other, and they could come to some mutual agreement on the defense of Europe. But since the United States did not seem to be interested in talking, and since the U.S. and NATO have refused to provide any written documentation that these missile systems are not directed at Russia, he said they have no choice, so that the early attack warning system in Kaliningrad has been placed on combat alert, and that Russia is moving their missiles internally to be sure that they are honed in on military installations in Western Europe. And he did this on national television to try and get a message through to people here. In other words, they're not sneaking around. They're saying, "You're sneaking around, and here's what we are forced to do if you don't wise up." So, in the United States, and because of LaRouche and because of the Russians being so clear, the U.S. military actually mobilized. And because of the mobilization, with LaRouche hammering on people to not be naive, and the U.S. military fighting, they don't want nuclear war. What you had is Phase 1, which would've been some kind of surprise attack on Iran. That didn't work. We threw off the timing. But it's not over. And furthermore, Obama's ambassador to NATO, Evo Dahlder, who apparently was educated in London and went to Harvard, gave an interview in the New York Times where he said, "People really shouldn't worry about this Medvedev speech. It's just an election ploy." You know, like people move nuclear missiles around to try and get votes. I mean, the only person I can think of who would use nuclear war as an election ploy is Barack Obama. And then, to make matters worse, he's running his administration like a satanic gang, where people have to pass loyalty oaths and revoke things that they believed in. So, our Secretary of State, Hillary Clinton, was ordered to utter statements questioning the honesty of the Russian elections. And then her statements were exploited all over the press to elicit a response from Russia's Prime Minister Putin, who blamed her for inciting the riots in Russia. Now, remember, Hillary Clinton was the one, when Obama first came in, who made the famous visit to Europe, met with the Russians, and said, "We're gonna press the restart button." She had reversed the Bush administration policy to put all these missile systems on their borders, and now, under Obama, is threatened into eating her words and saying these insane incendiary things. Happily, because of LaRouche's very sharp intervention, this thing did not blow up. So, you may ask, how is it that we're gonna get, if this lunatic is able to control so much, how are we gonna get this guy out of power? I mean, after all, I mean, who are we in this room? Aren't we just, isn't each one of us just one little person? Do we have any power? Do I have any power? And that's the question. What is power? The great German poet and philosopher Friedrich Schiller wrote a very profound and beautiful essay on this topic. It's called "On the Sublime," which addresses the question of the difference between brute force and what actually constitutes power. And he begins his essay by quoting, "No man must must." In other words, that human beings possess free will and can choose through their free will. Human beings are not subject to nature. We can act against nature. For example, a firefighter who risks his life, endures massive discomfort to rush into a burning building to save someone that he never met before. He's acting from a higher standpoint, which is the principle of the sacredness of human life. But what about force? What about things that are more powerful? Like, take your cat. If anyone's ever tried putting their cat on a leash, you know, it doesn't work very well. The cat runs under the couch, or it sits down, or rolls over. But you can pick up the cat, and you can carry it somewhere and force it to go where you want, because you're stronger. Well, Schiller takes this question up as well, because there's one force, one end, which seemingly no one is going to escape, which is death. So, how can human beings possess free will and not prevent themselves from dying? And this is the real question of a sublime individual and the question of courage, because a sublime soul, an individual who is chosen to act from that standpoint, at the moment that death is unavoidable, chooses to make death his own act. So, if you think about someone like Joan of Arc, who had a choice, she could've avoided being burned at the stake if she was willing to renounce her divine inspiration. So, she could've lied to save her own skin. And had she done that, she might've lived. There never would've been a nation of France. But she chose to die. She accepted death, so that even though they burned her at the stake, she was the one who was victorious. And France is a nation because of that. And if you think about presidents like Abraham Lincoln or President Kennedy, they possessed a similar quality. They may not have known, didn't come down to the wire, in the same way as Joan of Arc, but certainly they knew that their policies had very powerful enemies. They knew that they had been threatened with death, and they decided that they were going to continue with their policies in spite of the danger to their personal lives. And interestingly enough, the Transcontinental Railroad was completed in 1869, four years after Abraham Lincoln was assassinated. And we landed on the moon in 1969, which was six years after Kennedy was assassinated. So, the British assassins of our presidents turned out to be less powerful than the principles which the presidents represented, which resonated in the hearts and minds of the American people. And to give you an example of that, I just, people probably are somewhat familiar with this speech that Lincoln gave, which was long before he was president. It was December 26th, the day after Christmas in 1839, and there was a huge fight going on on the question of national banking, and everyone told him that he was going to lose. So, this is from his speech. "So-and-so confidently predicts that every state in the Union will vote for Mr. Van Buren at the next presidential election. Address that argument to cowards and to knaves. With the free and the brave, it will affect nothing. It may be true. If it must, let it. Many free countries have lost their liberty, and ours may lose hers. But if she shall be at my proudest plume, not that I was the last to desert, but that I never deserted her. I know that the great volcano at Washington, aroused and directed by the evil spirit that reigns there, belching forth the lava of political corruption in a current broad and deep which is sweeping with frightful velocity over the whole length and breadth of the land, bidding fair to leave no green spot or living thing while on its bosom are riding like demons on the waves of hell, the imps of that evil spirit, and fiendishly taunting all those who dare to resist its destroying course with the hopelessness of their effort. And knowing this, I cannot deny that all may be swept away. Broken by it, I too may be. Bow to it? I never will. The probability that we may fall in the struggle ought not to deter us from the support of a cause we believe to be just." So, that's Lincoln. That's his identity. It sounds a little bit like Washington today, I must say. So, what causes a human being to do things anyway? If I put my arm up like this, why did it go up? Is it because there's some guy with a pulley back there who lifted my arm up? Or is it maybe because my brain issued some kind of electrical signal? And another signal, and another signal, and it caused some muscles to contract and other muscles to expand? And when I raised my arm, I didn't fall over, so a whole bunch of other muscles came into play and kept me balanced, and I was even able to continue speaking while I did this. So, maybe we could get some computer to calculate it all and figure out how many millions of signals and cells were involved in this. Well, how come I was able to lift it when I wanted to lift it and not at some arbitrary time? Well, you could say, "Because I decided to do it." All right, well, where are the decision-making cells? And I know, don't say George Bush. He was the decider. But you can't, you're gonna tell a brain surgeon to look inside my brain and try and scoop out the part that made the decision that I was gonna lift my arm, and then put it on a Petri dish and figure out what it is? So, the question is, what's more real? The motion of my arm or the intent in my mind when I decided to move my arm? And this is the question that's been taken up throughout history, and it's very ticklish, from Socrates to Schiller and Einstein and LaRouche. My intent is not perceivable by your senses, but it's the cause of an action which can be measured by your senses. Now, I am not suggesting that everyone here sit in a yoga lotus position and meditate on the removal of Barack Obama, because I don't think that that will work, and I think if everyone here decided to do that, he definitely would not be removed. But there is a connection. And it does mean to consider that every action has a cause. And in most cases, the cause of an action is invisible to our senses. But that doesn't mean that the cause is unknowable. And the challenge for human beings is for us to conduct our actions from the standpoint of reality, not from appearances or shadows, if we wish to survive. Abraham Lincoln was determined to win the Civil War because he imagined in his mind what the fate of mankind would be were the British Empire to succeed in splitting up our republic and for the British Empire running their slave- our republic and for the British Empire running their slave trade and their opium trade to get control of the entire hemisphere. And because Lincoln could imagine in his mind what failure would look like, he knew that that war could not be lost. General Grant, who may have had a slightly different idea of the consequences of losing, nonetheless had an equally strong commitment that this war could not be lost. And therefore, General Grant was prepared, as people may know, who know this history, to take absolutely massive losses. A bloody campaign through the wilderness, whatever it took to ensure that the war was won. On a recent tour of West Point, a professor told us that in all major wars, the side that suffers the greatest losses is the winning side. In other words, in a just war, in a war that's necessary, it's not how many people that you're willing to kill, but whether what you're fighting for is precious enough that you would be willing to die for it. And if it is that precious that you would die for it, then you know that you can't afford to lose. Now, of course, we cannot afford to have wars in that sense because we have nuclear weapons. So therefore, given the state of affairs in the world today, war is not an option. War is obsolete, unless you want the human race to be extinct. Unfortunately, the United States and the world is suffering from a severe shortage of qualified leaders. And that's why LaRouche asked the six of us to run for Congress a year ago. And perhaps there's going to be more of us soon. And he made clear to us since then that we're not really running for Congress in the way that you'd think of it. We're not running for regional positions. Each one of us is running in a district, of course. But if you think about the role of the House of Representatives, what do they do? They deliberate on national policy. They vote on national policy. And as such, we are responsible for representing the good of the nation first. Also, if you look at the collapse of the economy, the collapse of civilization, the collapse of culture, there is nothing that can be solved by any local effort. Things that you think like unemployment, that's across the nation. Floods, that's across the nation. Extreme weather, that's across the nation. Foreclosures, it's a national question and an international question. And then if you wanna think about the near miss we had with the giant asteroid which went between the moon and the earth, that's a global question, which really ought to be addressed if we're interested in surviving. I don't know why we should take it for granted that every gigantic asteroid is going to not hit this planet. So the most urgent issue that we have to address right now is not elections. It has to do with whether we can win the war in our own minds and our neighbors' minds, that the survival of the human species is at stake, and that it's worth fighting to save it. So I'm not proposing an armed militia. I'm calling for spiritual arms, that everyone should put aside, all of us, all of the comfortable, pessimistic, and fearful thoughts which prevent us from acting to cause this president to be constitutionally removed from office in time. Thank you.
We're gonna hold off on questions. We're gonna get right into Shawna's presentation on Einstein. We have a 4:30 date with Mr. LaRouche. Shawna?
So I have the pleasure, and I will do this to the best of my ability, to help you all make the acquaintance of a good friend of mine, Albert Einstein. Scott Mooney brought this up. Why would we be looking at Albert Einstein when we're talking about the removal of Barack Obama? We're talking about thermonuclear world war. Why are we gonna talk about a scientist who's long been dead? We all know he's a genius, he's a great scientist, but how is that going to help us with these extreme crises? What I would like to point out historically is that the time period where Albert Einstein became increasingly isolated, I don't know, I don't have enough time to go through his entire biography, but he escaped Germany when Hitler was coming to power. He came to Jersey, not London. But by this time, this World War II period and the post-World War II period, he became more and more isolated. He said that he was treated like a museum piece, like petrified wood. What happened was that the scientific community, the academic community, as well as culturally and politically, had taken a turn for the worse, as we see with World War II and then what happened under Truman once Franklin Roosevelt died. So the crises that we're experiencing today really stem from that period. And Einstein stands out in that time period as resisting the shift to fascism in the United States when he stood up against McCarthyism. He is known for defending teachers, for their right to not have to, I guess it was the right to plead the Fifth under the interrogation of McCarthyism. He was at the beginnings of the civil rights movement with his association with W.B. Du Bois and Paul Robeson. He had a strong independent identity, which allowed him to resist the trends that started in the post-World War period, which have now built up to the crisis that we're experiencing culturally today. So I would like to kinda give you guys a hint of the secret to his identity. Where did he find that strength? What made him able to resist such extreme pressure from the surrounding environment? And early on in life for Albert Einstein, he had a sense of what Diane brought up, of the sublime, that there was something more to life than just daily existence, getting by, that there was something higher as a purpose for your life than just physical, physically subsisting. He says, in his youth, it had a sort of like a religious feeling. And even though his family wasn't religious, he was attracted to this. He would write his own hymns to God and he would sing them to himself. He would try to do, practice religious eating habits, even though his family did not participate in that. But then at the age of 12, he realized that by reading certain scientific books, that a lot of the stories in the Bible couldn't be physically true. So he felt that he had been lied to. And he started becoming very skeptical of the state and of education, and it gave him a sense of being a little bit suspicious of authority. This was later, he said, tempered with maturity, that it wasn't that religion was a misguided path, but that religion of the naive man was to fear God and to try to please God as if he was a father figure. So he found a higher religious sense in his pursuit in science, that he committed his life in physics to look for higher causality in the universe. So, and I have some quotes to back up these claims, but let's see. The way he expressed this intention, this ultimate goal of his life, was that he wanted to know the thoughts of God. He wasn't interested in the spectrum of this or that element, but he wanted to know his thoughts, everything else is details. So he says, "You will hardly find one among the profounder sort of scientific minds without a religious feeling of his own. But it is different from the religiousness of a naive man. For the latter, God is a being from whose care one hopes to benefit and whose punishment one fears, a sublimation of feeling similar to that of a child for its father. But the scientist is possessed by the sense of universal causation. The future to him is every whit as necessary and determined as the past. His religious feeling takes the form of a rapturous amazement at the harmony of natural law, which reveals an intelligence of such superiority that, compared with it, all the systematic thinking and acting of human beings is utterly insignificant in reflection. This feeling is the guiding principle of his life and work, insofar as he succeeds in keeping himself from the shackles of selfish desires. It is beyond question closely akin to that which has possessed the religious geniuses of all ages." So that's interesting. I know Einstein, it's popularly known as an atheist, but were those the words of an atheist? It's more that he was beyond an ideology of following a certain religion. His identity was committed to something higher than just what was popularly conceived as worshiping God. He considered his life work as expounding and trying to communicate to humanity the beauty of God's works. So this was his overall guiding intention in science and physics. And what he stepped into in 1905 was a debate in causality. In physics, there was, at the time, a two-sided debate. One side of the debate was, cause and effect is the interaction of hard bodies, instantaneous action at a distance. This was the Newtonian theory at the time, that the cause lies in the body and it acts instantaneously on another body. This was at war with another theory of causation, of field theory, of electromagnetism, that you don't have the cause lying in a body, but in an immaterial substance which acts in a continuous wave. Continuous wave being diametrically opposed to just hard particles. So Einstein came into this around the time of the turn of the century with reading Planck's, Max Planck's work, which introduced the quanta of action. That's, would take a long time to explain, but the quanta of action that Planck discovered blew both these theories out of the water. Neither one of these theories could account for it. So it pointed the way to a higher explanation for cause and effect. Cause and effect is not just merely a domino effect of something hitting one thing and acting in a series of waves, and it's not just a mystical force between solid bodies. So this is what Einstein stepped into, where he's pursuing the thoughts of God, this higher So it seemed, in 1905, Einstein's miracle year, that Einstein was all over the place. He had a varied amount of different works that he was looking into, the sizes of molecules, the nature of light, mechanical motion. It seemed like he was like a jack-of-all-trades in terms of physics. So here's a quote for him, what his overall guiding attention is. "Now I believe that the events in nature are controlled by a much stricter and more closely binding law than we suspect today, when we speak of one event being the cause of another. Our concept here is confined to one happening within one time section. It is dissected from the whole process. Our present rough way of applying the causal principle is quite superficial. We are like a child who judges a poem by the rhyme and knows nothing of the rhythmic pattern, or we are like a juvenile learning at the piano, just relating one note to that which immediately proceeds or follows. To an extent, this may be very well when one is dealing with a very simple and primitive composition, but it will not do for the interpretation of a Bach fugue. Quantum physics has presented us with very complex processes, and to meet them, we must further enlarge and refine our concept of causality." So, right from the, you see Einstein is driven by a much more, higher purpose than trying to explain a phenomenon. He's not looking to get a complete catalog of all observations, which is what we normally think of a scientist's job. He's not looking for the ultimate formula to mechanically explain something, but he is pursuing something higher that is beyond logic, beyond just merely calculating or being able to explain the effect of something. But he wants to understand the cause-effect relationships of the universe from the standpoint of beauty. What's the reason why God would make it in such a way as opposed to another? So this intention, over the span of his life, is what organized each moment of his life. He wasn't genetically born to be a genius. It wasn't that his family encouraged him to be ambitious in science specifically. It wasn't that random events in his life built up in successive stages to be the end product of what we know as Einstein. It's that he had this one intention from early on in life to live beyond just a beastly existence and push his mind to its limits, to approach its Creator, to really be able to understand and praise the creation in that you're coming to know it. That organized every part of his life. So he wasn't fated like a poorly understood Greek tragedy, or he wasn't some sort of seed that was destined to grow into an oak tree. He willfully determined his life, moment by moment, even though the areas of interest that he had seemed very different from one another. They were all subsumed by this higher intention to know the thoughts of God, to progress humanity's understanding of the universe. So where did he find the strength to do this? There's a lot of pressure from the environment around you to just go along and get a job and keep your nose clean, do the best that you can on a day-to-day basis, but don't stick your neck out. Don't waste your time on lofty thoughts because those are just for philosophers, for armchair philosophers. So how did he find the strength in the environment that he existed in, which was very tumultuous, to stick to that higher intention and to resist, even to the end of his life where he was completely isolated, to continue that investigation to where we can look back at it today? What a lot of people don't realize nowadays is that he was the product of a classical culture. He came out of this continuous culture which existed over hundreds of years, which was carried on by a few individuals, and he had that inside of him. And what I'm referring to is Mozart, Bach, Beethoven. These people devoted their entire lives to expressing and representing the highest meaning of human life. And Einstein had them as friends. What a lot of people might be surprised to hear is that Einstein attributes his scientific discovery in special relativity to his musical perception. Now, we normally think of a scientist as someone who takes observations, does calculations, deduces a theory. deduces a theory. Einstein does not... Einstein says those things are important, sure, but that's not what's essential. That's not what's going to give you the inspiration, the passion, the breakthrough to leap to the thoughts of God, to understand what are causing these phenomena. He, like I said, attributes that ability to his imagination, and his imagination was trained or disciplined, you can say, or nurtured in music. Let me just read some quotes. Is that surprising to people, or is... Don't tell me you've heard that already. How many people knew that Einstein played the violin? Okay, that's good. So, how many people think it's a novelty that a scientist plays a violin? Does that seem out of the ordinary? Okay, you guys have been around too long. Okay, yeah, oh yeah, that guy. So, "From the horse's mouth, the mind can proceed only so far upon what it knows and can prove. There comes a point where the mind takes a leap. Call it intuition or what you will, it comes out upon a higher plane of knowledge, but can never prove how it got there. All great discoveries have involved such a leap." So some people think, to think rigorously and to be reasonable and rational, I have to take very necessary and measured steps, that there is a stairway to come to a logical conclusion. But what Einstein says is that you can gather all the facts that you want, but there's still a leap in hypothesis that you have to make to find the higher cause which is binding them, which produces them as a shadow, as a reflection of a higher cause. So in an interview, a person asked, "Then you trust more to your imagination than your knowledge?" Einstein responds, "I am enough of an artist to draw freely upon my imagination. Imagination is more important than knowledge. Knowledge is limited. Imagination encircles the world." So that sounds nice. You know, you might even hear that on Reading Rainbow or Sesame Street or something. But is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about the imagination of when you read a book, you can visualize what's happening? Or are we talking about the imagination of having a big purple dragon follow you around on the beach and at some lighthouse? I think there was some movie about that when I was a kid. We're not talking about fantasy when we say imagination. We're not even talking about the visual imagination, like, "Yeah, yeah, I can see that, I can see that." In Plato's time, it was called the soul. Nowadays, we're not really allowed to say that, because it sounds so mystical, and it's been bastardized as a term. But it's the place where the human being can go to discover an original and new idea that has never existed in experience before. So it doesn't exist yet physically, and it's a... The thing that you're going to discover doesn't have a physical existence, and you're not going to be able to read it in a book or get it from somebody else. It's only going to come from within inside you, as every new breakthrough has been of that nature. So when all the amount of calculation, when all the amount of rigor and dedication doesn't add up to a discovery, you go to the imagination, where you're able to playfully combine the different elements that the universe gives you in a sort of a sneaky way to provoke you into seeing what the higher cause is. So for Einstein, to trigger this imaginative domain, he used classical music. So what's special about classical music? What's particular that music would allow this to happen? Well, for one, it's the creation of man. It's wholly created by human beings. Classical music, I'm being very specific here, Haydn, Mozart, Bach, Beethoven, Brahms. They didn't go out in the forest and listen to a nightingale and then write those notes down. It wasn't a creation of nature, per se. It was completely from the mind of man. But that doesn't mean that the rules or the principles within the music are arbitrary in of that particular man's opinion. They are still as principled as the law of gravity. Music is based on harmonies. Harmony is... Music is one particular expression of harmony. And according to Kepler, the universe was created based on the principle of harmony. So God used harmony to create the universe. Harmony, not in the popular sense that we know it, like, three notes sounding together sound good, but what Kepler goes through is, it's even higher than the harmonies that we can conceive, but the music is a reflection of that. So music has this... Classical music has this amazing ability to be both subjective, as in it's the creation of man, so it's from the mind of man, and objective. It is of the universe. It is not outside the universe. It doesn't break the laws of the universe, and it only exists because of the principles underlying the universe. So it's sort of man's created pathway directly to the higher causes of the universe, because it's not determined by the material world. The material world has imperfections, is always changing. It does not perfectly or even closely express the true nature of the universe. It is not a direct representation of the thoughts of God. But with art, man is able to remove the accident of the materials, the accidental imperfections, and get to the essence of a principle or an idea. So, just to throw out a catchphrase, Plato calls this being and becoming, where being is the essence of something, the ideal of it, and the becoming is the material world trying its darndest continually to express that and always falling short. The being, the ideal, is not necessarily fixed, as we think of something being ideal, like, it's always the way it is because it's perfect, because it's... We are associating something fixed with the material world, where the being is of this higher realm of causality. So music is based on that principle. You do use notes, you do use sounds to express an ideal, but even if the performance is not technically... The performance of a classical piece is not technically perfect, you still are able to connect to the identity, the idea of the composer. Your mind is able to, in a way, communicate to another mind. So when Einstein was working on a tricky problem, and his mind would get knotted up, he would go to his violin and he would play. He said to get connected to the creative process of the composer, to tap into that domain, that higher domain of mind. What was I going to read? Oh, well. Another thing about music, it's a new idea that I have and I wanted to share with people, is that it's non-visual. Not only is it not of the sense of sight, but it's not of the sense of hearing either. When we use our hearing in daily life, we use it to identify objects. We hear a car outside, we know that mom just got home. We hear a cat crying, the cat's hungry, it needs food. So we think, when we use our audio sense, it's to identify objects. And music, in classical, in the classical sense, does not use hearing for that purpose. There's some composers who try to invoke images through sound. My friend told me what it was called. It's called, like, tonal painting, or something like this. Yeah, okay, I didn't hear you, but yes. Like, there's this one composer who did symphonic pieces of the planets. So the one I heard recently was Venus, and you can... It's very majestic, you can almost visualize the color of Venus and how it moves gracefully. Or there was this piece done for children about animals, all done with instruments. The most famous piece is "The Swan" by Saison, of course. So it's very graceful. And you can just imagine a swan paddling across a lake. This is not true classical music. True classical music is not trying to prey upon your visual abilities. It's going beyond anything that you would normally associate with your senses, though it's still extremely real. It's more real than what you associate with your daily experiences of the senses. And it's so real and powerful that it's what allowed Einstein to make his breakthroughs in science. So it's a funny thought that E equals mc squared, most famous equation ever. It's what we associate with nuclear, with the atomic age, nuclear power, which is a magnitude greater than the energy ability we had before the atomic age. This all came from Einstein's mind. It was a thought experiment. He didn't do anything in the laboratories to come up with that. It was a thought experience, starting with the simple thought of chasing after a beam of light, something that's not visually possible. You don't see light, I'm sorry. You see light bouncing off of things, but you don't see the essence of light. And you definitely can't, if you run up as fast as light and stare at it, are not going to see a beam of light, just undulating and just dancing there. That thought experiment, along with the... Something I wanted to show, but we really don't have time. The thought experiment of the simultaneity of two lightning bolts. When a train rolls by, oof, I'm not even going to go into it. One of the thought experiments that Einstein did to disprove the idea of absolute time that came from within his mind. And then further, and so on. These simple ideas that he came up with on, just purely imaginatively, changed the whole face of physics, changed the foundation of science entirely, and changed modern life. So, for ourselves, and we think about the problems that we're having today and the problems that we're... The difficulty we have in solving these challenges. One of the major weapons the oligarchy has used against us, to inhibit us, to cripple us to overcoming crises in economics, physical crises in terms of infrastructure and food, political crises, was that the classical culture of Albert Einstein, of Beethoven, was attacked, was destroyed. Which is a funny thing. You think politically today, the crises that we are experiencing come from George Bush, come from Tony Blair. But in fact, it goes back further of us culturally being attacked. We've been... There's been a fog in our culture to hide from us, to veil from us, our higher nature and higher ability of mind, to where we're dumbed down and encouraged to not have a sense of the sublime, to not seek out higher causes, but to, as animals, just get by in terms of what's necessary and think of cause and effect as a day-to-day occurrence. So the best way that we're going to be able to fight against that is to revive a classical culture. That's why you heard our attempt at singing earlier today. Why does a political movement run candidates, make policies on infrastructure, and then have a course at their town hall meetings? It's very... It's interesting, but it's not... We don't consider it as a perk or an ornament, or just something to make you guys think we're weird or, like, unique, I should have said. It's actually absolutely essential to the political work that we do. This cultural side is completely married and unified to the political work, to the scientific work, to our pursuit and reclaiming our right to be humans to the utmost potential. So Einstein's a good friend to get reconnected to that culture, to have an idea of how to make that leap in identity. And I hope to produce more, and thank you for your time.
Okay, so we actually have about 10 minutes right now for questions. There's a mic over here. We're going to have to cut at 10 minutes. Just, we have the... What Lynn, what Mr. LaRouche is going to say here today is going to go out live on our website, which is a new function of a website and an upshift in our capability of organizing politically internationally, is this live feed function on our website. And I will make a plug now. Saturday, this coming Saturday, the 17th, will be the second edition of our basement team's webcast, and it's going to be 1:00 PM, live on larouchepack.com. So, does anyone have any questions for either of our speakers?
Good, I'm glad you all figured it out. Oh, is that a question? The microphone's here. No, there's this man in the back also. Why don't you guys line up just to make...
This is actually a Shana story I'd like to share. As you were speaking, I was thinking of you, and I was thinking of my own, being a Nichiren Shosho Buddhist, and just having returned from Japan, and that causality, cause and effect, is the core law of the universe. However, my story's about Einstein. I had a boyfriend, hello, and I was in Jesus Christ Superstar on Broadway, and it was all new to me and what have you, and he was also sort of new to me, and he was telling me about his mom, who was a German immigrant. But she left Germany just for adventure and to find out what would it be like in the United States of America. And not because she was running away from Hitler, because she was not Jewish. She was the cook for the mayor of Newark.
Oh, she played violin with Einstein in the kitchen.
Well, she... Bob told me, he said, "You know, my mother, Einstein, would always come..." He was a good friend of the mayor of Newark. And he would come for dinner, and Mom, being German, knew just exactly what he wanted to eat, so she'd fix up everything specially for Einstein. And he would have a wonderful time, and he would never, ever leave before he would come down to the kitchen and kiss her and say, "Thank you so much." And he would bring his violin. And they would speak German, which he loved to speak German, and she did too, and he played the violin for both of them there in the kitchen. And they cried, and he cried over what happened in Germany and how her ancestral home was bombed to smithereens and all the like. But I just... There was such a humanity and compassion, and everyone was, you know, had that seed of creativity. had that seed of creativity, even the gal that was in the kitchen cooking for him.
Kitchens have good acoustics. It's true, he would play in his own kitchen.
And showers, oh, yes.
Well, don't take your violin in the shower.
I have the, I have a question for the same, yeah, Shana, your name is Shana? I'm sorry. Yeah, my name's Bogdan Drukowski. I, I actually read a lot about Einstein myself, and, and it was one time I bought a, it was a special edition Time magazine, and where he was, it was him, Karl Marx, and Sigmund Freud, geniuses of, every, yeah, every, every guy was in a different, you know, field, category. But my, my question is, I mean, I couldn't quite understand everything about what Einstein, you know, was producing his, all his work. I guess I'm not that bright like he was. But my question is, you mentioned earlier, you mentioned that he, that he tried to find God, and then he was kind of skeptical about God. My question is, was he believer or was he unbeliever? My question is, did he believe in God or did he, that he did not believe in God? Because you got to take one, one road, you can't take both.
Of course not. Well, it depends who's asking, because if someone who has their God as the old man above the clouds, who punishes evil deeds and who watches over everything you do like Santa Claus, he does not believe in that type of God. I, I'm, I'm being pretty bold here, I've never spoke to Einstein myself, but he, through his work in physics and seeing how clearly the beauty, beauty of the universe is revealed in physical processes, and how it's always above, there's always more to discover, that it's never finished or complete, and it just becomes a bigger and more beautiful picture, that for him says, "Yeah, there's a God that's infinitely beyond our understanding, that has the, the, the highest intelligence, who created this universe and who created our own mind in a reflection of, of, of God's ability to create reasonable things." So it depends who's asking.
Okay. Well, one, one more question, because you, you mentioned that his family was not religious.
No, yeah, they didn't.
But he came, actually, he came from a Jewish family, if I'm not mistaken.
Sure. No, yeah, he's Jewish. But they didn't religiously practice the different eating habits, like separating the knives and stuff like that. So when he was like a child, he was like, "Oh, but we got to separate the fork and stuff." But, yeah.
That's all I got. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
First of all, Marcel Lutes, thank you very much for a very comprehensive and fulfilling presentation. My question was about the experiment you referenced, that you said you didn't really have time to go into. I don't know if you have time now, but I heard it referenced previously as well, in very general terms, the train, the lightning bolts proving that time is not fixed, and that is something interesting. So I'm wondering if you have time to go into it briefly, if you could, and if not, if you could just maybe give the official name of the experiment or something in more detail or where it can be looked up.
Sure. I did, luckily, I produced a video called The Genius of Einstein, it's on the LPAC site. And in the middle of it, I do a class, I have an animation. I actually have it here loaded, but we only have three minutes, so I doubt that we'll get to do it. But just simply, real quick, oh, sorry. So if you're, if you're standing facing straight forward and a train's passing by you, right as the middle of the train passes before you, two lightning bolts strike either side, you're going to simply say, "A lightning bolt struck the end of the train and the beginning of the train at the same time." That's the way I perceive it, because I'm equally distant from both points. The light reaches me at, instantaneously at the same time, therefore, they struck at the same time at either end of the train. Somebody on the train, sitting in the middle, is not going to see an instantaneous lightning bolt at the beginning and at the end, because they're traveling towards the light. Light takes time to propagate. So the passenger on the train is going towards the lightning bolt, is going to see the one in the front first, and then he's going to say the one in the back reaches him. But that video dwells on that a little bit more, but it just shows that who has the ultimate reference frame to say, "Yeah, that was simultaneous"? Nobody in the universe. There's no spot in the universe that is fixed, that you can say two things happen simultaneously. Time is relative to the observer, and there's no time outside the universe. There's no God time except eternity.
Could you just give the name of the video one more time? I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. The Genius of Albert Einstein.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, my name's Andy, I mean, I know you can see the sticker from here. I don't know if you can. Some of you know me already, it's cool. Anyways, one of my first questions is, I thought it was interesting that you brought up the, one of the ideas of, one of Plato's ideas of being and becoming, because I was actually working through it myself, you know, I guess, seeing the universe not from, not from the standpoint of data, because I, people have a, our society, our culture, even the world, most people have a, have that view, they have that fetish of data, all these objects represent, sense representations. So I wanted to, just out of curiosity, I wanted to know which platonic dialogue, if there's any specifically discusses being and becoming, and also, when exactly did Einstein begin to do actual scientific work or be, actually, what the, what was the first steps in his life that he took which brought him to where he, he was, or brought him to his prominent position in science?
Well, that's a funny question. The point I wanted to make in the presentation was that there was no moment, no point, turning point necessarily in Einstein's life that made him a scientist, because his, every moment in his life was determined by this eternal idea of a higher causality. So from, from as early as he can remember, he had that higher intention to seek out the causes in the universe. So he was a scientist from as much, from as early as he can remember. When he was four, so he was shown a magnetic compass, and that just puzzled him, because it moved without anything touching it. So it implied to him that there was something higher going on. The platonic dialogues, I would think maybe the Fado? Actually, I have no, I, I, all the dialogues to me kind of melded into one and really expressed this, but also Kepler's harmonies goes through the being and becoming, and I think the best way to really study being and becoming is through music, because that's the principle it uses. I'll, I'll find dialogues for you though.
Yeah, that reminds me of what you were talking about before with someone else the other night, with the, the inner self and the, the other social self. Yeah.
The inner identity, that you've always belonged to, that you call yourself, to change yourself.
Okay, we have three minutes. We have to let LaRouche start on time, so if you want to be first, after LaRouche finishes speaking, Richard Black, who's there behind you, can take your name. He's to your left.
I can ask the question?
No, because we're on, we're on, this is the difference of having live stream and broadcasting, we have to allow LaRouche to start at exactly 4:30, and that's why we're all looking at our watches and trying to time this exactly right. At any rate, so I must say, it's a great honor to be able to introduce Mr. LaRouche. The first time that I heard him speak was at a conference in New Hampshire. It was before he was sent to prison by the friends of Henry Kissinger, Bush Senior, and the British. And it was a conference called Development is the Name for Peace. And what he was addressing was the question that there actually was a commitment to evil. I wanted to fight for the good. I was a college student, I was a music student at New England Conservatory, and I thought that people in poor countries who were starving, that this was a horrible catastrophe and we should do something about it. It had never occurred to me that someone would willfully do that to someone. And when it dawned on me from LaRouche's speech and the letters from heads of state and other, and other countries, that there was a commitment to do such evil, and that some of it was being done in my name as an American, I had a migraine headache for three days. And I'm hoping that that will not be the effect that LaRouche's presentation has on you today, except in as such as that migraine headache propels you into acting to save the nation. So I am very thrilled to be able to introduce Lyndon LaRouche.